...will negatively impact our ability to service the customer. And there, our hope is that the guidelines be amended so that in the areas of the district where blocks are smaller, where that the frequency be increased. We would certainly be willing to sit down and go through actual maps of the city and look at the installations. I understand that you can't, there has been apprehension to make a sweeping decision about spacing, and I think that's appropriate, but there are instances where we are concerned that it ends up being a provision of service if there are no new installations allowed, or if one installation is only allowed in one area. They're very short, they're very close to the customer, and the frequency would need to be closer together than one of our block.
So, that would be to chart on page eight, you would want to have the chart modified so that this is chart one, which is called, sorry, chart two, which is called permissible spacing and frequency installations. And what I'm going to say is that on block faces that are, that they're categorized up to 150 feet, 151 to 300, 301 to 450, et cetera, that, and you said smaller ones, so what I'm hearing you say is that on blocks, and as I read the guidelines, it says, limits per carrier per block, not just block face, but per block, which includes both sides, is that you would prefer to see those limits raised. You'd like to see the limit per carrier per block raised?
That's right.
Okay. Do you have a recommended number? The numbers currently are one per block for blocks up to 600 feet, and then two per block for blocks that have block faces greater than 600 feet.
I would like to circle back and provide you comments.
Is that agree?
At minimum it would be two. I think that there are areas-
By definition, if we were to increase it, it would have to be two.
And I'm not sure two's enough. So, I think we need to circle back and give you some specific locations.
And this, okay, so the reason, of course, you're beginning for this, that's exactly what we're looking for, a very specific statement about a specific provision with a specific recommendation. So, we would not be able to get coverage if we were limited to one per block when the blocks are a, are between 301 feet and 600 feet. We would therefore like to have two per block for that. That helps us. Thank you.
We can provide those comments.
So, so far, I heard those two for you, which is height and limit per carrier per block. The best part is you can all tag team because they'll be able to then say, because I guarantee you those are on their list as well, and they'll be able to say their parts.
They are. So, I'll add one more, and then I'll turn it over to my friends. So, there was conversation earlier about placement and prioritization of alleys. So, we think about antennas and how they work. It needs to have clear space around them, and if you place them between two buildings, they're not going to serve anyone. So, there are very few instances where a small cell would provide any additional capacity to our customers if it was placed inside an alley.
Except for those people who are a little busy on the internet, and even in that case, there might be challenges if there's a fence or some other medium that blocks.
That's right.
As I'm hearing, what I'm hearing you say is that there needs to be, let's all call it visual connectivity between the device and the antenna.
That's right.
Is that agree?
Yeah.
Okay. If I can't see it, it's like a, it's like a mirror, you know, how on trucks and buses you'll see the sign that says, if I can't see my mirrors, if you can't see my mirrors, I can't see you. It's the same basic concept. What I'm hearing you say, and I'm not the technical expert, but my cellphone needs to be able to visually connect to an antenna. If there's a physical obstruction, it makes it harder, and the more substantial that obstruction is, the harder it becomes to connect. Is that accurate?
That's correct. And it becomes increasingly sensitive when you move into 5G technology, if 5G's not going to work anymore.
Thank you. Okay. Why don't we go to the next presentation?
...the Public Space Committee. Thank you so much for having me to testify this afternoon of draft small cell guidelines and the critically important role that small cells and 5G technology play in the district. As the nation's largest provider of multi-tenant or hotel wireless facilities, we have a long record of working with jurisdictions and municipalities to deploy wireless infrastructure. In the state of our region, our customers, our wireless carriers provide service to end user customers. We have worked closely with Maryland and Virginia to deploy wireless small cell networks for their residents, visitors, and businesses. In fact, we have already deployed over 1,000 small cell mobile stations in Maryland and Virginia, many of which provide service for multiple carriers. Our work with the district is no different. Over the last two and a half years, we have worked alongside government officials, other stakeholders, and the community to find solutions that work for the district. The adoption of the small cell guidelines and protocols today are a result of those conversations over the last year. In order for the district to continue to position itself as leader and competitor in the new economy, all boards of the district will need to be prepared for 5G. The small cell guidelines are a critical piece of that puzzle. If Adam's thoughts are any of the topics anything about economic investment, it's that the ability plays a huge role in a company's investment decisions. We know that today, we're by a whole fast wireless cell phone service, a large component of a location's reliability. This means building a robust small cell network where residents work, commute, study, and play is critical to the district's plan to future. Today, 80% of all 911 calls originate from wireless devices. Small cell technology will give police firefighters and other first responders access to the information they need, with the ability to accurately quickly locate where the call was placed, allowing first responders to send the right jurisdiction personnel. A problem that first responders face when locating calls who originate close to district boundaries, something the district first responders recognize under strangership. When we build a network designed to address wireless service in urban and residential areas, we follow a rigorous process by identifying proposed new locations based on where our customers need improved network performance. We do not construct on speculation. We are closely with local municipalities and other stakeholders and community groups for identifying known designs and locations where respectful of the streetscape and heat beneath our companies. Crown Castle appreciates the efforts of all those involved in the development of the draft small cell guidelines. We filed written comments on the draft guidelines and highlighted a few of our concerns here. Wood pole small cell attachments are constructed pursuant to detailed guidelines and attached agreements from the pole owner and small cell companies, as well as other federal and local laws. Crown Castle requests that the Public Space Committee withdraw work with small cell attachments to wood poles while the guidelines are attached and metal streetlights and new poles are completed. We have a wood pole pilot location in Door Farm. We have an attachment license from the pole owner, and the make ready work is complete. We are requiring a right-of-way permit and with the happy to construct this facility of a pilot location. The use of a low ground cabinet should be more widely permitted under the guidelines. Radio accessories will be installed in the building, on the walls, in a cabinet installed on the walls or near the wall, or in a basement. The use of only bulbs for radio cables is too limited. We respectfully request that the guidelines permit the use of existing poles in areas where spacing requirements prohibit the deployment of a new pole for the attachment of small cells. On behalf of Crown Castle, our employees, contractors, and hundreds of thousands of people that do work and visit the district rely every day on the network we build, we encourage you to take the next step in preparing for the future and release wood poles for small cell attachments while the guidelines for metal streetlights and new poles are finalized. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. If you could pull up toward the end of our option inclusion, I just want to show what some of our proposed facilities will look like. Okay. So, this is a wood pole installation. We have filed applications for this installation, but it didn't really go to the open earlier this year. There's a canister antenna that's up to probably over a foot. That's one. I think that's why you didn't get it.
Another one of your written comments were, was that you thought that this, these types
of infrastructure, these facilities should be regulated similar to other types, to other types of similar infrastructure, and I wondered what other types of infrastructure you thought was similar that you would refer to as an example.
So, we're concerned that other users of the public space are not, are not subject to the same kind of standard regulations to deploy their facilities that are identified in the draft small cell guidelines.
Such as? I mean, as far as I know, we have regulations for everything in public space, so it's not unusual to regulate something in public space.
Right. And we understand and appreciate that, but-
Can you move the mic closer to your mouth, please?
Yes, I can.
To our knowledge, that there are not separate eccentric guidelines like this for other types of-
I think it might be your microphone. Is it on?
Okay. Okay. Our concern is that-
I don't think it's on. Will you pull back for a moment, and then see if the green light is on, on the midway through the face?
Our concern is that other users of the public space do not have similar detailed guidelines that they have to comply with in order to deploy these facilities. So, that could be anything. It could be bike racks, it could be lanterns, or newspaper boxes.
And you had to mention newspaper boxes. So, there are regulations that are very specific about newspaper boxes. They regulate the height, the width, and the depth of a newspaper box, newspaper box. They, Ms. Edwards will go chapter and verse on it with you because the older regulations were literally uncut. Hold on a second, I don't want to get in trouble with my attorney. Can I say that they were questionable constitutionally? They were questionable constitutionally because they like required them all to be green with one letter, okay? So, there are substantial guidelines, and we've developed a guideline. Ms. Edwards has done an excellent job. These are great guidelines that detail in to, like, with pictures, what's an acceptable publisher's box and what's unacceptable publisher's box. They tell them they can't be covered in graffiti. There's no regulation about yours in graffiti. They tell them they can't be, they can't be discolored. There's no regulation about yours in discoloration. They tell them they can't be, they can't be attached to, in fact, they said they can't be attached to streetlights. So, see, we're allowing you guys to attach to streetlights. So, for the record, there are substantial regulations related to a variety of infrastructure, utility and otherwise. For example, we also have very specific bike racks that the District of Columbia has adopted. So, if you want to install a district bike rack, more power to you. If you want to have a non-district standard bike rack, you got to come before the Public Space Committee. So, just as in the case here, if you have guidelines and you follow them, and they're adopted guidelines, that have gone through a full vetting process, and you follow them, yay. If you don't, then you wouldn't need to come before the Public Space Committee. So, we're treating this very much, like I said before, this is just another permit. What we're doing is establishing the standards and guidelines for this type of permit. Thank you.
My next question, and this is, I can throw it up to all of the carriers because it's come up from each of you, which is the alley location, which for us is a real preference, but it sounds like for you, it's a real problem.
Right. So, the biggest, the biggest problem with alleys is that there are too many obstructions, so we do not get the full benefit of the small cell coverage. So, for instance, our facilities normally have a 300 to 500 foot coverage area, but that's much smaller than the width of an alley. So, we're going to have the problem that if we deploy, deploy our small cells in alleys, we run the risk of them getting hit by garbage trucks and other users in the alley, and we're going to have to deploy significantly more of them because we're not getting the coverage where we need it.
Is this the same for single-family home districts, where the buildings are more spaced out? Is it the, or as to a townhouse neighborhood or an apartment building neighborhood?
It's going to apply to both of them. So, an alley between two single-family homes, depending on the size of the alley, may work better than installation of a facility in the alleyway between two townhouses or apartment buildings, because the structures aren't as large, and there may be more open space.
I don't know the answer to this, but I mean, have you worked in other cities that have as an extensive alley network as the District of Columbia?
We've built 50,000 small cell cities throughout the United States, so yes, we've worked in many cities that have alleyways and other areas that are preferred for fulfillment, and we've run into the same issues. We just don't get the same kind of coverage, and we run the risk of damaging, you know, the use of the alley itself potentially damages our facilities, and our facilities could damage, like trucks, for instance, that are trying to use the alley.
I don't see, I mean, I understand some of your other points, I don't see that point so much. I mean, we have trucks that drive on the street, so I don't see why that's any different. I mean, the alleys are narrower, but we have-
Right. So, the problem is the area, the alleys are narrower. Under the guidelines, it's, we've done some research on our design, and it's not clear to be even a bi-wide spacing requirement, for instance, 10 feet from a building, it can't be 10 feet from a building and an alley, or two. So, even if we can build a building, it's still not going to provide us the kind of coverage that, for instance, we're going to get in the streets itself.
So, I think I'm loud enough that you all will be able to hear me. So, what I'm hearing you say is that in addition to the coverage elements that were initially discussed by ATC, you also see concerns related to adherence to some of the general standards in the guidelines related to placement. So, you would, if we were to continue with the prioritization of-
That's a single-carrier solution. The canister antenna and the pole, and the cabinet mounted on the pole is a multi-carrier solution. So, for the individual carrier solution that's mounted on a wire between the poles, we can power a few of those installations from one power cabinet up.
And how long are those cabinets?
They're smaller than our other cabinet. I mean, they can be exactly the same.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, just want to clarify one point. Are you saying the pole to which you would be attaching a new antenna does not need to be replaced?
It's already been replaced.
I really look forward to talking to the utility who did that. That was Pepco? We'll have this discussion offline. I'd like to know the Pepco pole number and the prep number in which they did that work. I look forward to receiving that information from you promptly. Thank you. Hi.
I think we're a little out of order. Jennifer McCallum, representing Horizon, I don't know if you want to hear from the ability first, or do you want to go ahead?
We'd love to hear from you because you are the next person to the antenna.
All right. I believe you received a revised PowerPoint that added two slides that summarize the beginning, some of the data that were in the comments that we filed on.
Did these come from Mr. Strohmer, correct?
And Mr. Strohmer and I will be tag teaming.
By the way, for the record, you'll now need to say his name, spell his last name, and so it can be on the record.
Okay. I will, so I am Jennifer McCallum, M-C-C-L-E-L-L-A-M. Owen Strohmer, S-T-R-O-H-M-E-R.
See, this is the problem with Horizon, is that there's both a Stover and a Strohmer.
That's why I just say Owen.
So, that's what threw me off, because I originally was looking for Brian Stover. I believe he's in the room with us today.
That's why I just say Owen.
So, is it, is it this one? Or is it this one? Or is it this one?
It's Owen. So, keeps it going.
Is it this one?
Yeah. Hold on, I'll look at that.
Sure, is this one the website?
Is it not the one on the website?
Well, I don't need it. We had added two slides to summarize some of the data that we've been on comments.
This was on the fireplace.
Subscriptions in the district. The red line shows the decline of wireline and interconnected voice services in the district, and the gray line shows roughly the population of the district. So, you see, we have more cell phones than people, and just looking at voice data, voice alone, what we have found is that the country in general, and the district in particular, are cutting the cord at rapid paces. And if you go to the next slide, I can tell you.
I can't go to the next slide until I clarify that your showing of the population of the District of Columbia as from December of 2016 is woefully outdated, because the District of Columbia is approaching, has now surpassed 700,000 residents.
Well, the 700th in the middle is unfortunately the way they're in now.
I know. Touting the District of Columbia as the greatest city in the history of that world.
The city's growing. The city's growing. Thank you. So, since 2008, wireless subscribership in the district has increased 36% from 1.1 million subscribers to 1.5 million subscribers. Unfortunately, 2016 is the last year we have publicly available data because the FCC usually has a two-year lag in there. This is all carriers within the district. When you look at the data, the National Center for Health in charge of the CDC surveys, in 2007, only 20% of district households were wireless only. In 2015, for the first time since the NCA started collecting that data, over half of district households were wireless only, at 54.2%. That was the first time over half of the households in the district were wireless only for their voice services, again, voice only. In 2016, which is the last year we have district-wide data, 55.3% of district households were wireless only. 17.8% mostly used their wireless phones. 15% were dual-use households. That means they used their landline phone and their wireless phone roughly equally. Only 3.8% of households exclusively used landline phones, and only 3.9 of households mostly used landline phones. That does not equal 100. The rest don't use any phones at all. Core cutting in the district outpaces the nation. Wireless-only households crossed the 50% threshold nationally in the second half of 2016. You see, across the district in 2015. Now, while we only have district-wide data available, Horizon announced recently it has begun providing fixed wireless 5G residential services. It now has 4G in four cities in the country. We'd love to be within the district, but it will require more facilities. With that, we appreciate the delicate balance that the Public Service, that Public Space Commission has to reach between the demand for services and the highly designed nature of the district of Columbia. There are some concerns that we have with the guidelines. I will highlight just a few from our comments on the fifth. It has been alluded to, but the guidelines could be clearer that any installations that do not comply with the guidelines would have a path forward for approval before the Public Space Commission. If that were clearer, I think a lot of our concerns would be mitigated, because particularly if you look at section 5.2.1.4 of the general limits that provides, if there is an existing pole within the guidelines that allows for attachment, then no new standalone pole will be permitted. But there are very real possibilities that the existing poles in a particular place that hypothetically meet the guidelines do not meet the design needs or the capacity needs, are not in locations where small cell equipment would actually provide service to meet the capacity of that particular area. And so, we need some assurance that on a case-by-case basis, while such applications should be rare, that there is a path forward for non-conforming usage to be considered. I think we also, we echo the concerns that have been raised before with underground vaulting requirements, and just to summarize our comments on that, we have actually done some vaulting installations in other cities where we have found that they increase the likelihood of service disruptions. The bottom line is, the equipment does not work if it's submerged underwater. The equipment does not work if the area, and they're very sensitive to heat. And so, when you have an area like the district that is, that is highly susceptible to moisture and flooding, putting equipment in an underground vault increases the likelihood that that equipment will fail. And so, that, that is, at a high level, our concern with the vaulting requirements. We also echo the concerns that you have heard for alleyways. I won't belabor that, other than to say, most of the coverage needed is on the street, facing the street, either driving on the street, walking down the street, and in most cases, installations in alleyways will not provide coverage to reach the people in front of the building. And I think at this point, I will, well, two other high-level points, and then I'll turn it over to Owen. We want to reiterate some of the concerns around third-party poles. Third-party poles, in most cases, will need to be replaced, because in most cases, those poles were placed decades ago and would not comply with existing current standards for the replacement of poles that would hold small cell equipment. So, as a result, some of those poles will need to be replaced. The carriers do not control the height of a pole that is installed. While yes, you have regulations that would govern that replacement, the carriers cannot control the height of that new pole. And so, our concern with the guidelines, and I think we need a higher level of up to 32 feet for an extension of 10%, we are concerned that in some cases where poles, particularly electric poles, are replaced, and you have to have a certain distance requirement between electric equipment and communications equipment, that a pole would likely be higher than 32 feet. But, and we did offer a specific recommendation in our comments, I'm not signing at the moment, but we did offer a recommended alternative to the language in that section. And then finally, and, sorry. poles should be allowed in areas where DBOT attaches streetlights to existing third-party poles. This is related to our first comment, but there may be areas where there is a third-party pole where DBOT has a streetlight, and way to meet the guidelines under certain circumstances, a new pole could not be placed across the street, but that, but the pole isn't a pole on where DBOT has its lights, may not be available for attachment for a variety of reasons. And we think under some circumstances, if those would be, there are many-
Noted that the districts would, so this is their words that we're just summarizing, but that study, which we will provide a site to, noted that the districts would-
study, which we do provide a site to, noted that the district's location results in two primary sources of moisture: air moving inland from the Atlantic Ocean, air of tropical origin in the Gulf of Mexico, and air containing moisture recycled from land surfaces, lakes, and reservoirs. And the National Capital Region Planning Commission in a report issued in January of 2008, which was a flood report that I believe was addressing some of the reasons why the district was more prone to flooding. In that report, they noted that the district, it says, quote, "The district's location at the confluence of the Potomac and Acosta rivers, combined with three buried waterways, broad fork plants, and relatively flat elevations render it highly susceptible to periodic flooding."
So I think that is specifically in areas where the two rivers combine, like the Los Angeles neighborhood, which has been identified, and here's one being the Casper River in parts of downtown. I don't think flooding is a concern throughout the entire District of Columbia. I think there are some neighborhoods that are more susceptible, but I don't think that's a reason to go across the board and not consider this.
We were not suggesting that the entire district is susceptible to flooding, but part of the issue here is when the carriers are going to decide where to install small cell equipment, they are going to base it on where our capacity is, and some of our capacity needs could require equipment to be in a place that is susceptible to flooding. Now, from, I also represent Verizon for landline, and there are a number of instances where heavy periods of rain in certain portions of the district will flood Verizon telco vaults. And so it's the same concern, but the equipment, the wireless equipment at issue is much more sensitive to flooding than the telco equipment, because usually with the telco equipment, you're talking about a copper wire, but with, and not necessarily electronics in that home, but the equipment we're talking about here includes electronics. So we already see in a number of portions of the district where heavy periods of rain alone are enough to cause service outages. Our concern is that it's much more likely to happen in those areas if you were to put small cell equipment in front of the wall.
No, I understand, and there certainly are neighborhoods where it's warm and humid enough.
I'll have to defer to Owen, but in general... Right. So if you think about your land, I'll focus on landline telephone equipment. A majority of the landline telephone equipment that is in a vault underground is a copper wire that is wrapped inside of some sort of insulation. And usually that insulation keeps it from getting wet unless there's, you know, there's a splice that gives damage, and then once water hits that copper wire, it's out. This, the radio equipment, or the small cell equipment that we are talking about here, you can't wrap it in an insulating thing or won't work. And so it is much more likely to get wet than the copper wire in an insulator in that vault. And that is my non-engineering, my lawyer understanding. Anything deeper than that, I'll have to defer to Owen.
Okay, thank you. My question is less about the copper wire, and just so everybody understands, when we're talking about wireless technology, it's kind of a fib. The only wireless part is between you and the antenna. Once you hit the antenna, it's all wire all the time. It goes into their existing wire network and feeds wire to wire to whatever, to, you know, Alexander Graham Bell, and then back to you. So the reason I bring it up is because Pepco in its transformer vaults has a lot of sensitive electronic, electric equipment, and it might be their equipment is shrouded, or encased, or enclosed, or doomed, or interred, or some other word meaning in something, but I don't know because I'm not the technical expert. So what will help us better understand your issue related to vaulting of equipment, which by the way, some people at the table with you don't have in it, is that you're stating that your equipment is susceptible to outages and shortages related to flooding, so we need the technical data, like, not here, but in writing, that we can then go over with a fine-tooth comb and have people much smarter than I am, who are not hard to find, go over that.
Thank you, we will do that. Do you still want to hear from Owen on this point, or...
If he'd like to talk about it, that's fine, but Owen, go engineering on, because it's up to you. And really thank you for being very patient. We'll get to you eventually. Just a little bit more about the underground vault equipment. So it's not just about water. Small cell equipment produces heat, okay? That heat will decrease the performance of the small cell equipment. It is high-tech, it's not waterproof, it's not... So to counteract that, we have to have fans in the vaults. To counteract water, humidity, we have to have pumps, okay? We have pumps, we have fans, we have the equipment, the space for the equipment manufacturer or the company to work in. That creates vaults that are approximately 6 feet wide, 11 feet long, 8 feet deep. Those are large underground structures, okay? Currently, the DC right-of-way's already have, are extremely congested with existing vaults, utilities, trees, and EDOT infrastructure, okay? I think everyone knows that we're looking to deploy several hundred of these in the next couple of years, and there's just definitely not enough space in the EDOT right-of-way to allow for this. Not only that, other challenges are where are we going to discharge the water from those subpumps? Next is that ventilation from those fans, we're going to need above-grade, low-grade vents in the sidewalk to not fracture shore or allow in the EDOT right-of-way's under current code. So, you know, for these reasons, we believe that underground vaults are not a good solution for the industry, and that we believe the designs that we presented today, and I'm going to show you in a second, are aesthetically pleasing enough to make sure that we're able to provide our services in a practical and cost-effective way. Did you say six by 11 by eight? Correct. And even under those conditions, you know, a lot of the problems will just be mitigated, but not, not particularly resolve a lot of issues at times. So to be clear, you're saying that for your vaults, you would need them to be six feet across wide by 11 feet long by 8 feet deep? Correct. That would include rates, ventilation rates that would be required. Exactly. What kind of operating temperature range are you trying to keep the equipment within the optimal size? That's a good question. We'll get to that later. Go ahead. Sorry, I was going to pull up some examples of vaults in the right-of-way where I don't think that that's the size, but it's all good. Any more questions about the vaults?
And what's the size of the equipment that that vault is for?
Well, if you want to pull up, let's move to the first slide that we had. So this is a, our proposed small cell. So as you can see in the first photo sim there, we have a cabinet that's on the pole, and that cabinet is approximately 5 feet 7 inches tall, 16 inches wide, 14 inches deep, okay? So the equipment that would fit in there would fit in the vault, and a worker would have to be able to work inside that vault. You have to have room for subpumps, the fans, and ventilation system. And that still doesn't include where we're going to do, what we're going to have, where we're going to discharge the water.
You said 14?
My name is Erin Waits, it's W-A-I-T-Z. I'm from government relations for Mobility. I also have here with me Laura Odell, who was at the NAMM neighborhood. So for, one, I can kind of run through...
Can you spell this Odell's name?
It's O past week, D-E.
So where, where are we, like, how many major cities across the nation do you think you've already implemented 5G technology? Has it been implemented, and I heard there was some reference to Chicago, I've heard after the...
Sure, I think the best way to answer the question is to talk about where small cells have been deployed.
Okay.
That's an easier answer for me, so there are, while I'm only responsible for Washington, Baltimore, my colleagues in other parts of the country in major, I mean, well, I'm responsible for Washington, Baltimore. My colleagues have lesser cities that they're responsible for. And so, you know, I am behind my colleagues in New York, and in Atlanta, and in multiple cities in California, right? We are, we're a source for concern here, right? We are behind, and it's, we have a program now that is the top 20 cities, and we answer to them weekly, and I don't have great answers right now. So when I gave my comments about just urgency and capacity needs, that's really what's driving them, is that we're taking customer complaints, and, you know, as a company, the district is important, it's one of the things on that top 20 list and whatnot.
So I can echo those same comments. We have small cells deployed in almost all of the top 20 markets at this point. This is definitely fine, it's other top competitors.
I would answer that there are four cities that Verizon has already announced 5G deployment, and in those cities, the small cell installations were already installed in the right-of-way. So it's sort of a chicken and egg thing. Until you have enough equipment installed that will support 5G technology, you can't roll out 5G in a local.
Thank you.
Mobility.
No, I mean, it's 100% the same. It depends on where we've already been and where we've already made kind of headway seeing what small cells are providing into the capacity that they're able to fill the gap at.
That's very helpful. Thank you very much.
The process was another US city has been coming through this?
Yes, so the city that we looked at that had the most, what I will, in my personal opinion, had the most...
Sir, are you able to pick her up?
That had the most thorough guidelines. They worked for nine to 12 months on those guidelines with the providers, as well as with the community, going through what I would assume is very similar community processes of public hearings, et cetera. But I've been talking to at least two or three, it was nine to 12 months to come up with guidelines. And I'll just state that we have been working on these guidelines since about May, middle end of May.
Thank you. Any questions for the, for the industry representatives from committee members?
And it's, it requires to be a minimum of 15 feet wide, and what we found is that that is very restrictive. There were some blocks, and I will provide you with the details, where the, we could find plenty of poles that worked, except for many of them, all of them, were within 15 feet of a tree. It was, you know, 12, 10, there was room. We actually provided a study, there are a couple universities that their requirements are significantly less, and so we would ask that that portion of the guideline be reviewed. We will provide you with maps to give you some examples of why it is covered.
And just to be clear, it's not distance from tree roots, period. It's distance from a particular element of trees. So I just want to be clear with people, trees don't grow down, trees grow out, and so tree roots grow basically within the drip line is the most critical root zone, and then beyond that, tree roots do grow, but it's for the purposes of a tree, as I stated from our foresters, the drip line, which is essentially the canopy above, is the most important part of the tree roots. So do you have proposed language? And then our urban foresters would love to look at it.
Yes, we provided a study that we suggested would be more appropriate, and if you don't have it, I'm ready to reset it.